So, good evening. This is Tuesday, March 1st. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Central School District Board of Education. This is following our 6:30 presentation on school start time. May have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9, 2016 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second. By Lisa. Any changes to the minutes? All right, seeing none. All look in favor. That's unanimous. Actually, we have one abstention. Walker. Motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Any members of the public that would like to make a note? All right, seeing none. Move on to principals reports.
Principal report.
Through the short section. The senior. We have Mr. Kennedy unable to join us. I refuse to buy bifocals.
I'm the same.
This is a report by GMA. Prior to the last board meeting, John Hope said you were able to view the gallery display of eighth grade LA students' projects entitled Taking a Stand: Civil Rights in America. And you will recall that thanks to an arts and education grant, students had the opportunity to research social injustice through history and work with local artists to create their own pieces. Feedback was overwhelmingly positive. And for my own part, being able to look at all that work was very impressive in terms of what the students grown and how they presented their research into social justices. Earlier this month, 10 BMS students represented instrumental corps music programs at the DC MEA Junior High All County Festival. These students were selected based on their NISM SOLO scores from the previous spring for band and orchestra, or through a recorded audition for the chorus. On February 20th, several eighth grade students took part in the Rhinebeck Science Fair held at Clark College. Ms. Kobo reports that the experience is positive for all those who participated, and she has a number of ideas to improve on the program for next year. Another three BMS students were recognized last week as second quarter nominees in the Catching Kids Caring Program. As you remember, this program is sponsored by the Colonnus Club, offers an opportunity to recognize students for demonstration of positive character and leadership. John would like to thank the support of Avalon Books. BMS will continue to recognize three students, one at eighth grade level on a quarterly basis. BMS computer teachers continue to work with consultant or heating. Last week, they spent two days working in the classroom in addition to analyzing the new industry standards as they relate to the ongoing development of the sixth grade computer science curriculum, both in scope and sequence. In addition, BMS computer teachers met with representatives from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation to brainstorm a number of ways in which the foundation can help support coding activities in the middle school. Last week, the PTSO held its annual book fair. Thanks to their hard work, just under $1,400 worth of books have been donated to the BMS classroom libraries and to the building library. Some upcoming events. Next Monday, March 7th, BMS will hold its seventh annual Top Chef competition. This activity was started years ago to encourage healthy choices, balanced nutrition, serving size awareness, and label reading, to bridge students with members of the local culinary community, and to develop a sense of teamwork bonding and community bonds with students with similar interests, and has quickly become a student favorite. Once again, entries will be submitted, and students will compete in one of three categories: a main dish, a side dish, or dessert. Several celebrity judges will include guest chefs from Terrific, Rhinebeck Babes, and La Vehita Astro in Rhinebeck, as well as CIA grads, faculty members, and this year, I understand, members of the Board of Education. So far, John has 30 entries, and all are invited. Finally, March 11th is Career Day. The goal of the stage is to call parents and community members to expose students to a variety of new activities and to provide an experience that enables students to imagine creative possibilities for themselves. Author, entrepreneur, and radio host Carol Pesci will serve as a keynote speaker, and her address will be followed by small group presentations on a variety of careers including electrical, computer engineering, law, sales, and environmental education, among other topics. So that's John's update from BMS. In the high school, a handful of academic updates. In the next several weeks, our business law classes will be taking a field trip to Duchess County Supreme Court with the kids under the guidance of Mr. Moore, so we're looking forward for that experience for our students. In the English department, all of our teachers are continuing to supply examples of student writing across the curriculum, so our English department is a form of student anthology of nonfiction writing. In addition, our English teachers are working on and will continue to work on articulating curriculum on incorporating grammar instruction in a meaningful way within English classes. In sciences, our AP Bio classes conducted another in-school field trip. They completed an enzyme lab using a spectrophotometer from the chemistry lab. This is an inquiry-based lab, based on the effects of various factors on enzyme action. They've also worked on concluding a lab with Daphnia, which as I understand it is a water flea, on the effects of temperature on heart rate. They'll also use a lab on the human kidney, and that will help prepare them for a presentation by Dr. Pietro on March 9. In the art department, if you have not yet, if it's a moment in the new wing, you can take a look at one of our display cases, the most recent sculpture project. Students researched an artist of their choice, and they transformed a painting, a two-dimensional painting, into a three-dimensional relief sculpture. In addition, they designed some QR codes so that with an iPhone, you can find out more about the artist they selected. Some of that work is just very incredible. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, it's still work. The co-curricular side of the shop, we have another very successful spirit week in Pepper Alley on February 5th. This Friday, members of our Creative Writing Club and the Writers Workshop will be traveling to Woodstock Day School to attend LitCon. LitCon is an opportunity for conference for literature and art lovers. All of our students will participate in writing workshops, they'll get tips on creating a literary magazine for Rhinebeck High School. Our debate club returned last week from another debate tournament at Clark College. We sent our club composed of two teams. One of our teams finished third overall, which was still very impressive, and another team of students who are novices did register several wins on that day. If you're in the new wing and checking out the student artwork, if the door is open to the auditorium, you can take a peek in and see that the proscenium arch is up in the auditorium, which means that we're heading towards our school musical. Quite lovely, so if you have a chance to take a look. This past Saturday, our Model UN Club hosted the first annual Mid Hudson Valley Invitational Model UN Conference here at Rhinebeck High School in our auditorium. Initially, we had four or five schools who had indicated that they were 10. This turned out to be more of a dual meet rather than a UN track meet, so to speak. So Rhinebeck and Rhinebeck students competed against one another. We had 50 students in attendance. This was an all-day affair. Mr. Moore notes, which included spirited debate, furious negotiation, and nail-biting votes on international resolutions. Several of our students from the Rhinebeck delegation won awards as honorable delegate, and the best position paper representing Guatemala was written by two members of our Rhinebeck Model UN Club. The Model UN is currently investigating another invitational that will take place in about a month at the Dalton School in Manhattan, so we're going to be more careful about that. I'd like to note that, again, this year, we're sending some of our students who attend CTI, the Career and Technical Institute, to attend the Skills USA competition in Syracuse. As you recall, these are competitive events showcasing the best career technical education students in our county, state, eventually the country. The students compete in a format that includes both rating examinations and hands-on demonstrations of the technical vocational skills that they master, so I look forward to reporting to you again on how our students fare. We have had, I'm delighted to announce this year, two national merit finalists. These are about 1% of the 1.5, 1.6 million students who take the PSAT and are really at the top echelon of scholars and student academics. Looking ahead, as I'm sure you know, we begin our sports season Tuesday, or Monday rather, and we're looking forward a little bit further to our school musical beginning on April 8.
Excellent. Questions for Dr. Davenport?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I did see, I was at the basketball game sectional finals, so congratulations to the basketball team for making it that far, and also our semifinal, whatever it was. And I did see the artwork that were the reliefs, three-dimensional reliefs, and honestly, fantastic work. Incredible. Really just, like, one more example, I mean, so many examples here of some just incredibly talented students, but our art department, the kids just do really impressive, creative, authentic work.
Yes, absolutely. No else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the 2016-17 budget development.
Yeah, we're massaging the budget, which is part of the process as we track towards the adoption of a budget mid-April. Tom has made some tweaks to the last budget document that we presented to you on February 9th, which he's handing out now in an overview, and glad to say it's going in the right direction.
It would be very frightening if it was going in the wrong direction.
True. Things are going the opposite way.
All right. I did make updates to the third draft budget. I'm not giving you a whole complete set of brand-new documents, and we will go through these changes. There were few of them, but do have a good effect on the bottom line. So, first page is what we went over through the last budget meeting we had on February 9th. If we move to the second page, we've gone through the process of looking at some new additions or an increased addition to the revenue budget. Christine and Natoli, our treasurer, and myself, we took a concerted look at our excess cost aids, that's public and private. The number that was on the state aid runs was a little less than $125,000. We knew that we were going to receive additional funds beyond that, and found out the way in which that was, it is computed, it's an average, and then multiplied by the number of kids in the program. It does not look at your specific individuals, but we can look at our individuals, and in looking at it, I can conservatively increase the excess cost aid by a little over $150,000, up to $275,000. But please know that as we go through this process, as I have mentioned before, there are still a couple special ed placements that haven't been completely vetted yet, meaning we got everybody we know are here, but there's a possibility that one or two kids may graduate this year, and that's still yet to be determined. And during this process, a couple of them, if they do, are graduating, meaning I will take an expense off the revenue side, but I also will have to lower it, depending upon the individual. They have to lower that revenue side, so it may not be a dollar-for-dollar type of situation. So that's some positive news there. And in the deletions in the budget, is some good news, well, I don't want to say it's good news. Later on in tonight's board meeting, if you accept the one-year leave of absence from one of our teachers, that will have a budgetary savings of $50,000, so that's reflected there. About two weeks ago, I had a workers' comp meeting with our consortium in Duchess County. Rates came out very favorable for us, and actually, they're pretty much cost-neutral. I was able to subtract $15,000 from that program. In addition, with health insurance, the rate has not been set and will be set in approximately two weeks at our next DEHIC meeting, but at our last meeting, it was determined that the rate would not exceed 7%. So I lowered it from 8% to 7%, which produced an additional $42,000 in savings. So the net effect of this is actually about $257,000, doesn't particularly, I mean, the net effect of it all. So, not strictly coming right off of our taxes, so was able to reduce the tax increase from 5.31 to 4.48. Now, the maximum allowable tax levy limit is 1.26, so there still is a gap there, but that gap has gone from $1,072,000 to slightly over $815,000. So we still have some work ahead of us, there's no doubt about that, but at least it's moving in the right direction.
And there are still, as is always at this time of year, a number of costs that haven't been nailed down, and we hope that they will go in the direction that we want them to. So there's still, there's still a lot in flux, and of course, the whole state aid picture is in flux. There's likely not going to be enough there to make up all of that gap, but we'll be hopeful. But we'll plan for the, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best, and, but that's typically the way it is this time of year anyways. So we'll keep you posted. Yes?
So I was wondering if there were any developments on the state aid front other than the excess cost aid that you've just addressed? You know, for example, I have not heard that the Senate or the Assembly have come out with their specific proposals yet, and I was wondering if you'd heard anything further about that?
No, I have not heard that yet. I did read an item a couple of days ago, which was, actually, it might have come from the New York State Academy School Superintendent's, that gave a lot of positive signs regarding the closeout of the gap elimination adjustment, some very strong statements by Senator Flanagan that the Senate would not approve a budget unless GEA were fully restored. Again, we've heard that kind of bravado before, and things wind up getting massaged in the final mix, but that's what I'm hearing out there. When we met with those of you who were with us, when we met with Assemblyman Cahill a few weeks back, he signaled to us that he thought that if not a complete ending of the GEA, that it would be, in his opinion, very close to the full monty, which for us would be about another $160,000. So even if we didn't get every cent of that, but somewhere close to that, that would help the bottom line here too. But it's still all up in the air, and you're right, I have not heard that either the House proposals yet, so that's, you stay tuned on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Joe, could you, or Tom, like, what are the pieces that we're still waiting on, that you said that are?
Well, waiting for a final number on health insurance. I mean, I'm hearing anywhere between six and seven. It could wind up being seven, and then we're already there.
Right.
If it drops to six and a half, for example, and that saves us a little bit more. What else is still hanging out there in terms of costs that haven't been? Well, obviously, some of our special program placements haven't finalized, Tom, to that, so that still has to be resolved. What else is out there?
Is TR, do we have TRS yet?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's already been, at the last meeting, we had a deduct of $35,000 with the new rate. One of them that's still out there, of course, is transportation, that being one of them. The health insurance, like we mentioned before. We also have the workers' comp reserve. Even though we just reduced that line by $15,000, we can use some of that reserve, and I can't remember off the top of my head how much is in it, but it's pretty significant. I think there's $150,000 there, might even, I think it's 150, to use that to help offset some of these expenses, you know? But that's one of those things that, you know, let's say it was 150,000, and we use 30,000 a year, in five years, it's gone.
Right.
And so you have to know in that sixth year, you have to build back in that $30,000 into us, but that's the appropriate thing to do. So, you know, we have a mechanism there to help bring us down. We have compiled a list, it's still in a draft form, from each of the buildings and the departments of, it was over, it's about $600,000 worth of cuts that.
And I gather?
Hopefully, it won't have to be, but I mean, some of them we should be doing anyways.
I gather you want to talk about that during the Finance Committee report, because I know that that's discussed in the report.
Yeah, we can reference that in the report. We'll be giving you that document, so you'll have plenty of time between, before our budget workshop on Saturday, the 12th, which is a week from this Saturday, to really roll up our sleeves and talk about the specifics of that. We did have some conversations about that in the Finance Committee specifically, as it might impact staffing at the middle school, and because those positions are shared positions, and because we're talking about different discrete certification areas, once you get into the secondary, it makes it a lot more challenging, but we'll talk about that a little more.
Yeah, we talked a little bit, Joe, it was mentioned or discussed a little bit at the meeting that you, when you were in Nicaragua, and about, or like I mentioned, trying to consider, have numbers if we want to try to get put out to the voters exceeding the tax levy limit. And, you know, this, in all the years I've been on the board, this gap is the biggest that I've seen with very little at play still. And so, one thought that I had was that we get numbers on what would it look like, say, if we kept to 2%, which is kind of the common way that people think of the tax cap, so that's something that the community might be comfortable with. So I'm wondering if we could add that to the information that we're getting, which is sort of, you know, I mean, that's like another 0.75%, so how much is that?
It's $195,521.
Can we talk about that just in the meanwhile?
We did that today. If we were to go up to 50%, that would create additional, a little $195,000.
Right. Because my thought is that our budget workshop is soon, and I, you know, I feel like that should be on the table.
Yes, I agree.
I know Lisa's talked about this, trying to prepare our community for a while. You know, one thing I'm struck by just at this very particular meeting is, you know, when our principal is here telling us of the tremendous things that are going on in the school, really just a remarkable amount of activities, and that, you know, what impact on all of that budget cuts might have, because even $195,000 isn't meeting, isn't doing what we need.
Anyone else?
Assuming that the, I just can't remember the answer to this. Assuming that the state's budget is finalized on time, so there'll be a budget with figures on April 1st, I believe, or, you know, within a few days of April 1st. How long do we have before we have to finalize our budget?
It's mid-April sometime here, pull out the exact date.
So, we don't have much time.
We have it as of April 19th, but we can go as far as April 24th. April 24th would be the final, final day. You have to submit the next morning, April 25th, your number, so. We have it scheduled for a public hearing on April 19th, but ultimately, we have to April 24th to actually approve our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
I guess we can talk about this a little bit more during the Finance. That draft tiered, untiered cuts that we've got, is there some sort of descriptor about sort of long-term planning for finding $600,000 without taking it out of pencils and notepads, and really looking at it a little bit more holistically, so that when we do talk to our community, we can say, these are the kinds of things we need to do to bridge the gap, these are the kinds of impacts that it'll have on wherever this $600,000 is coming from, because we can't really communicate with our parent community or any of the people out there that are going to be voting for our budget without telling them other than, well, you know, these line items are going to be taken out. So we talked also last time about trying to have a little bit more of a narrative to go to the community and talk to them about what kinds of options we're looking at. So, I don't know whether that is part of the cut document that you guys have seen in Finance or not, but it would be extremely helpful, especially before the board workshop.
I agree.
It's a mixture of things. It's a mixture of staff positions, putting off purchasing of equipment, cutting back on supplies and materials. It's kind of a mixture of every type of thing. I would think that they'll have it pretty quickly here. I mean, we're really close to getting it, it's just, we've got some more tweaks.
We probably should be able to get it out to you by tomorrow afternoon, I would guess, but Tom's right, I mean, it's, we asked each of the building principals to give us $100,000 each of cuts, and then we asked our other directors, curriculum O and M.
Technology.
Technology.
Athletics.
To give us, well, athletics.
Not $50,000, but.
We'll ask them to give us $50,000, so I think it totals up to around 600 plus thousand.
It's about 600 altogether.
And I think, as we discussed at Finance, the tough decisions are the instructional positions, because again, once you get out of the elementary grades where it's a, you know, it's an elementary certification, and that also includes sixth grade, because K6 isn't the same certification areas. Once you get into grade seven and above, now you're talking about specialty certification areas, and that makes doing what we did last year that much more difficult when a cut in this particular area, in seventh grade, for example, winds up having an impact on the last teacher, 712, who was hired, who probably is not teaching in the middle school or teaching in the high school, so it has a wider ripple effect, and it makes for a very unpleasant situation, because you're impacting now a lot more than just kids at a single grade level. So that's where the tough decisions will have to happen, or not, with those positions, and they'll be called out in that document that you'll see.
Thank you.
Diane?
Excuse me, one thing you would see in that document are the names.
Of course.
I mean, not that we would distribute that publicly anyway, but, and we had some of those discussions in Finance Committee, you'd be surprised that, how those, even a cut of 20% ripples into some areas that you would be surprised, but we'll get there. But, we'll get there.
For the budget workshop, when you do the increase in the tax cap to 2%, can you also include like what that would look for, the taxpayer, what that would look like? I know that's harder.
Yep.
And maybe even going above the 2%, just so we can use that.
Yeah, my plan is to-
Give you some increments.
Yeah.
One of the things I want to show is what the average home has done over, since the tax cap has been in place, what has the median household in Rhinebeck, what does their tax bill look year to year to year, to kind of show how the tax cap is working as far as that. It is, it is doing that. But also, now we're starting to feel the effects of that, because of that loss of that revenue stream. And, just to show that, it's really been well below even what the tax levy increases, because of all the growth we've had in our district. Because even though our tax increase might be, the levy increase might have been 2.5%. But if you had 1% growth, that means the homeowner only had 1.5% because that additional new 1% is picking up that difference. So, I want to show that too, because that has a good powerful statement to it as to the effect it's had on the homeowner. And now we're starting to see some of those, the consequences of the tax cap.
And then I'm wondering, in the past, when we've had the cut list, they've usually gone up to the full, the amount's been the full cap, the full gap amount? I mean, none of the things we're waiting for seems like it's going to, could bring it down that much.
Right.
So I'm wondering why they're, not that I'm looking for more cuts, but, you know, why they, you're saying they're around 600,000? Like why they're not the 815, you know, 815, yes.
600, I mean, as a Finance Committee, are brutal enough, honestly.
I know, but I mean, if it doesn't come down-
I mean, we'll see on March 12th, do we need 200,000 dollars more? Maybe we do, but I think-
Hopefully we don't, but it's, that's the number, right?
Well, we needed to start someplace. When we started this process, there were so many, you know, for example, we were sitting there not knowing if we were even getting any retirements.
Right, sure.
I mean, since then, there are no retirements. So that's not, that's a help we've had in other years that we're not going to have. So, if there's still a gap, then we'll have to go back to them and say, we need to see what X would look like beyond what you've already put on the table.
I'm just asking, is that when we'll have, you know, the people there to ask the questions about the different cuts?
Yes.
That's mine.
Any other questions or comments about the development? Okay. Move on to Board Committee reports. First up is Communication.
I've got those. So we initially talked about the transportation situation, I think that day, maybe the day before. We had learned that Always East had entered in an arrangement with Total Transportation Company to take over the contract for transporting not only our kids, but Spackenkill and Bosse's. Because of that, we are allowed by the State Department to enter into a 31-day emergency contract, which we are currently, and then we'll vote on later tonight. Also by SED law, we didn't have to put out a formal bid for those 31 days, but at the end of March, for the period of end of March to the end of June, we do need to put out a bid for the balance of the school year. Total Transportation has indicated that they are interested in participating in that bid, and hopefully those numbers will come in appropriately. This, of course, is all happening while Tom is working on putting together a three-year transportation contract with our partner schools. But it's important to note that there has been no change in service, bus routes, bus drivers, transportation personnel. It's been a really remarkable transition, and it happened incredibly quickly. So, congratulations to all for making that seem so easy. We spent, we spent the next part of our meeting talking about the Superintendent's Conference Day on March 12th. The second half of the day was all about things technology, and teachers were given two hour-and-a-half blocks with 11 sessions to choose from. It's important to note that most of those lessons were taught by our very own faculty, and it was incredibly well-received by all of the professional faculty they had. And you could see all of the courses, but everything from, you know, how to develop their website, to Mac basics, to how to use YouTube for instructional videos, is really quite remarkable. And the teachers were asked to fill out surveys at the end, and they were incredibly positive of the content and the instruction of their peers. So that's really exciting news.
Laura, before you go on, is that date wrong? March 12th?
I'm sorry.
It's March 1st, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry, February 12th. February 12th was the Superintendent's Conference Day.
I thought it was me.
March 16th will be the next one.
I thought it was me.
Sorry, sorry. Another big part of that day, part of the information that was gathered from that day was about a learning management system called Canvas. It's currently being used in the Project Lead the Way classes, the Gateway to Technology classes, and the Social Studies 7. It's a great tool for teachers to be able to communicate with their students and parents. Sort of, it's a digital datebook. It also allows kids to submit homework electronically. There were a number of teachers who were really, really excited about the opportunity to use this. So Steve Jensen is looking at the possibility of adopting that more broadly throughout the district. We talked about student email addresses, you know, and the kids not using them. Really, the bottom line is that if teachers aren't communicating with their kids via their district email, they don't really have any reason, as we heard tonight, to go on to their district email. They're just, they're not going to use it as a means of communication. So we have to think about new ways to encourage them and give them reason to actually check their accounts. We then turned to the budget and elections, and on Friday, we'll be meeting with representatives of the PT SO and the Rhinebeck Science Foundation to hopefully begin a deeper conversation with them about what we're looking at in terms of budget shortfalls, and hopefully get feedback from them about what they are hearing in the community and what our community will support in terms of getting our budget passed. We will also set up meetings with our three bargaining units. That date is to be determined. We had a brief discussion about the Bosse's board position, and Joe's going to talk to Dr. Houli about what his communication strategies are with Bosse's parents. We, on the committee, didn't really feel as though we could nominate anybody, because we don't really have a good sense of what that position entails, so it seems unfair. And then, of course, we turned to our own uncontested seat on the board, and really would like to encourage all members to reach out to people that they know. Personal outreach has historically been the best way to get people to overcome that fear of serving on the board, and I think we can all agree it's worthwhile. So, if we can start shaking the bushes, that would be terrific. And Joe's posted a news item on the website. It's got the complete packet of information for prospective board members. He will also have that under the Board of Education tab on the website, along with our Budget Development updates. So, we're going to let you know how it goes with our community support groups next time.
Diana, is your handle?
I have a question about the transportation, so maybe that's more for Tom. But, so the bid process for the March through June piece, does that work the same as normal bids work, as far as, you know, the lowest acceptable responsible bidder?
No, we're changing the scoring act, because we do not want to go with the lowest responsible. We want to have continuity of service, so we're putting a big emphasis on that. It's really not about price, it's making sure our kids get here every day. Price will be a factor, but-
It doesn't absolve you from the lowest responsible bidder, but they're going to qualify it with the continuity of service clause, because we've got to be able to run those buses the day after the 31-day emergency contract expires.
So what does that mean, continuity of service in that context?
Meaning that the day that that emergency contract ends, whether or not we can go out for a second one is a possibility, but it hasn't been completely determined yet. But, what would have to happen is, at the end of that 31 days, or at the end of the next 31 days, that next day, whatever company it is-
I see.
-has to be in here with bus drivers, driving the routes, picking up all the kids, and not missing kids, and hitting all their spots. And I don't see how you can do it without, you know, the current, you know, bus drivers.
And is that, I mean, this is a really short turnaround to-
Yeah.
I mean, for us, for the bus, for anyone, if that happened, I mean-
We had that situation at the end of last year.
So, this is even like tighter than that.
Right.
So, there's possibility, maybe for another emergency time period?
More than likely, we're going to have to, just because of the whole timing of the situation, and all three of the districts have, we've talked about it, because in reality, you know, that bid has to be awarded by the school board.
Yeah.
And when is that? March 22nd. That's the middle of spring break. You know, our next meeting isn't, I think, the 29th. You know, so, everybody has this kind of situation where there's no way in the world we'd be able to get it done. And we know that other school districts have gone to a second emergency contract. It's been done in the past.
It's permissible.
It's permissible. SED doesn't like to see it happen, they want to make sure that you're doing the things to go out there and get that, but, you know, they know it can't be done.
Can't have your kids not getting picked up.
Yeah, can't have that. That would be, that would be another, that's, they've got to be here.
Okay.
Got to be here. And, and another thing, just to make a point, Total Transportation did not take over the contract of Always East. They did not take it over. They assumed the services they provided, they did not take over the contract. It's the emergency contract that we're proving tonight that there's, is what they're doing.
Right.
So, just a slight clarification, I mean, it's just, it's different. They did not take over the contract. If they did, then we'd be paying them the same amount of monies.
Right.
And that's not the case.
That, that's why the previous contractor has to pay the differences.
That's correct. Yes. I did clarify that tonight with our legal counsel. No doubt about it, we do have to pay the Total Transportation, the amount that-
We should probably talk about the details.
Yes, yes, we should.
All right, anything else for Communications Committee? All right, so move on to Curriculum.
Okay, that's me. Curriculum Committee met on February 23rd, and we asked Marvin when we might expect the annual report that he does to inform us on state testing data. And he pointed out to us, there is actually an embargo on the test results at the state level, at least until the end of the month, and he's expecting that he will be able to get that information, the presentation together, this month, which is now March. He talked a little bit about how data reporting has changed, and the incredible volume of data that he's essentially reporting every two weeks now, as opposed to at sort of more spaced apart intervals. He says upward of 22 times a year, he is called upon to participate in this big data collection. And when the question was asked in the committee about how that information is made available to us at the local level to inform our sort of decision-making, our policymaking, he said, essentially, it isn't really available so much. It's more a kind of a one-way stream away from the district to the state level. That got us into a conversation, though, about a moment we're in, where actually having some good indices for tracking data are crucial, which is around this proposal about school start time, and we were very fortunate to have Marvin's expertise come to bear on thinking about how we might find a few key indicators, and he thought that that is something that the district is absolutely equipped to do, to quote, "test the theory of its action" with both quantitative and qualitative data. So, we are grateful to him for his willingness to continue to inform us about how to move forward on that. We talked about the rest of the Superintendent's Conference Day, we heard about the afternoon sessions about technology. The morning sessions were led by Dr. Jaeger, who spoke about Kennedy's moonshot speech, how do you get from, you know, somewhere here on the ground to the moon, and how do you engineer your way there, setting goals through the CDEP planning process, and then kind of having conversations amongst the entire professional faculty about how we're going to move towards college and career readiness in a meaningful sense by 2022. 14 vertical teams met to discuss moving from vision to action and from gaps to goals. So that was K through 12 faculty in all of the major academic content areas, mathematics, ELAs, social studies, science, but also in physical education, art, music, library, technology, foreign languages, AIS, Student Support Services, Special Ed, and the AIDS and Greeters, met to talk across buildings about how to realize this vision. The plan ultimately is to kind of distill from these conversations five or six key themes that will emerge from these working groups, bringing that back to the CDEP team. And Laura, of course, is our liaison to the CDEP, and I'm sure will keep us informed about those conversations. CDEP is planning to meet two more times this year. Laura talked a little bit with us about a film that's out now called Most Likely to Succeed, which is a documentary about High Tech High, a charter school in San Diego. And while we recognize that obviously charter schools are operating under kind of a completely different universe in many regards, we got into a very interesting conversation about the pedagogical work that's being done there. And Marvin talked a bit with us about how the best practices that inform the kind of work that goes on in such a school clearly also inform professional development here in our district as well. We had a brief discussion of the college and careers curriculum. Many of us were unaware that that program had evolved as a kind of complement to the community service requirement for our high school students. That was fascinating, and we got into an interesting conversation about how that link could perhaps be understood a little more explicitly. And Joe noted that this, like so many projects that come out of conversations around curriculum, could be a good subject for a project, a curriculum project in the summer. We talked a bit about the process for how summer study grants and curriculum work starts to generate in the spring, and that will be coming up before too long, not before too long. On the horizon also, we got into a very brief discussion of how the district's K through 5 math curriculum is currently under review. The SED has indicated an intention to review and revise math standards, curriculum and assessments. That's all we know right now. So it's important to be cautious until there is additional information before we go and completely change the K through 5 math curriculum. So, on the agenda for us moving forward, we will follow up, we'll continue to follow up. As you may recall, Marvin did perform a thorough audit on the health curriculum, we'll be following up with him on that. CDEP planning process, K through 5 math curriculum development, and summer development and study grants on the horizon. Our next meeting is March 29th.
Do you hear?
Yeah, so, college and careers is not a state ed requirement?
No.
Okay.
It's a graduation requirement.
Was it at one time a state ed requirement?
No.
Okay, so I had my information really wrong then, I was just-
Well, let me clarify that, because we had this conversation at Curriculum. Back in the day, when the district implemented a community service requirement, which again was a local requirement, the district was required to, you're not allowed to have a community service requirement outside of the context of a course, a credit-bearing course. So college and careers was developed to be the credit-bearing course that anchored the community service requirement. Still not a State Education Department requirement, either community service or college and careers, but a State Education Department requirement that you couldn't have community service without its linkage to a credit-bearing course. Maybe that's-
That could be any credit-bearing course, you know, say, if we decided that the social studies department in the high school was going to promote community service through their academic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay, move on to my minutes.
Okay, those are my minutes. Much of what we discussed in Finance, we've already talked about, including the first thing, which is the transportation update. I just want to clarify, because it seemed like maybe with the discussion earlier, there were questions about this that the audience, you know, our, our community might want to know, which is that we do anticipate that there will be increased costs in our transportation programs, some of which, though, have already been built into our budget for this year, potentially, though. So, I mean, this isn't just- So, I mean, this isn't just cost neutral, the changeover. We were not able to discuss, we didn't have time to discuss an update on the cafeteria program. We will get to that later. But Tom did just point out that revenue has gone up this second, in the new year, suggesting that in fact the upfront costs account for the fact that we had less than robust savings in the earlier part of the year. But we'll get to that perhaps in our next meeting or thereafter. The budget update, you know, much of that has already been discussed. The one piece that we didn't discuss earlier in this meeting was that with the smaller class sizes moving up from the elementary school now in sixth grade and a significantly small at that grade level going into seventh grade, one of the budget cuts that is on the table is considering making the seventh grade teaching positions, cutting them back point to FTE, which there was sort of robust discussion at the meeting about whether that's a rational thing to do regardless of budget cutting. And what is that impact specifically, right? Because who gets, like, what position actually gets cut? And then, you know, another perspective, which, you know, Deirdre reminded the committee that really the heart of a school and a community is its people, not the stuff we have, not the technology and computers, but people. And, you know, that we should carefully consider cutting staff, what would be the impact on our educational program. But that does that in conflict with just a logical mapping out of what needs to happen when your enrollment's declining so much. We didn't have any conclusions on that. There are different opinions. I think it's important to just say that those conversations are painful no matter what and just acknowledge that because, you know, that's where we're trying to make important financial and educational decisions. It's in a very unpleasant context of both budget constraints and declining enrollment impacting the school system. I know, you know, that certainly there'll be discussion about this at the budget workshop. I couldn't even begin to replace our administrators, you know, and John Kementer in particular, to talk about what that would look like at the middle school, high school. But I would just say, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, within our committee, there are different viewpoints and concerns about what direction to go here.
No questions. Okay, move on to discussion on nominations and elections for the BOCES board.
Yeah, I just want to share a piece of information. We did discuss BOCES board elections at our superintendent's meeting this past Friday with Dr. Louie. And he actually clarified something that either I hadn't been aware of lo these many years or had forgotten. But he made a point of telling us slash reminding us that the nominations for seats on the BOCES board are to come from a board member from one of the component districts that doesn't have a BOCES board member. So it's a little different than being out there trolling around for an interested community member who we might nominate, but in fact it would be one of you who would have to demonstrate an interest in serving on the BOCES board, whom this board would then nominate. So that put a totally different spin on my thinking on that. So I just wanted to share that with you. And again, going back, I'm Pritchard, who was a member of our board when he ran for and was elected to the BOCES board, was a Rhinebeck board member at the time. So that should have been clear to me. It wasn't until a new, the new kid on the block laid this whole thing out for us at the superintendent's meeting Friday, and I had an aha moment. But we did talk about the whole idea of now that he's getting a little more comfortable in a new saddle, that better communication earlier in the process needs to happen in order to be able to generate candidates. And of course, those candidates, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, must be from one of the boards that does not currently have a member serving on the BOCES board. So that automatically narrows the number of potential sources of a nominee down to about six of the 13 districts. So anyway, it's just more informational than anything else. I know we weren't nominating anybody and probably for sure now we're not nominating anyone on this board, but I just want to let you know that the context is a little different than I had understood it to be. And, you know, we never really plumbed the depths of this very deeply because there was no interest. So it was kind of like, oh, we're nominated, okay, fine, next order of business. So that's been clarified for us anyway.
All right.
We did that story.
Okay, move on to good news.
We have a letter in our FYI about, from United Way, recommending Rhinebeck for its contributions to the United Way.
Fantastic. The teachers do a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Deirdre?
It's my understanding that our varsity basketball coach, Dave Airstock, was named Dutchess County Basketball Coach of the Year.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
Oh, wow.
Maybe it shouldn't have been public, but I don't know. I heard it like a week ago.
Wow, it's pretty crazy.
And I think if some of those students were also recognized, I'm sure at our next, you know, principals report, maybe we'll hear some of the students in that program were also recognized for their successful season.
Great.
That's great.
It's been a long time building that program.
Yeah.
Other good news?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate how amazing it was to see 50 at the Model UN meeting at the Rhinebeck High School. I can't even imagine what it would have been like if all those other schools had showed up because it was pretty wild just even with those two schools. And the amount of preparation and work that goes into hosting one of these things is really incredible. So again, for a young group just starting to learn the ropes of Model UN, really amazing level of participation and energy and enthusiasm. And look out, you know, Model UN world, Rhinebeck's coming.
That's great.
All right, other good news? All right, move on to old business. Any old business?
I'm not sure if this qualifies as old business or some other category, but let me raise it and then somebody disagrees that it's old business, we can find another place to talk about it. But I saw in the FYI that there's a draft calendar for next year, and I would at least like to have a little conversation about that or, you know, have you tell us whatever you can about how that came to be.
This is as good a place as any, I guess. And yes, I can tell you what I do know at this point. I have had a number of conversations with our bargaining heads just by way of getting some feedback. I have not presented them with, you know, what I would consider a final draft of that as late as this morning with our administrative team. We were, we were still massaging what's in your, what was in your board packet from last week. I mean, nothing, nothing major. I think the most significant thing that happened was that this education department finally released the June 2017 Regents exam schedule. They had not up to about two weeks or so ago. And what that did was push the rating day, which is at least on paper, the day when the last teachers who've given regencies need to have their exams scored, you know, rated by. They pushed that out to Friday, June 23rd, so that this year's rating day is on Thursday, Thursday, June 23rd. So that essentially put another day in the calendar. So that was, that was good news, A, to know what it was, and to have it put an extra day into the scope of the calendar from Labor Day through that date. So I think really the biggest downside to the draft calendars exists currently is that we will once again not have that Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. And again, there just aren't enough days between Labor Day and now that last day, Friday, June 23rd, to also have that Wednesday off. But ironically, we had that situation this year, and we had one of the best attendance days we've ever had, at least in terms of staff, ironically. So it worked out okay. So there will be no, looks like there will be no brining day on November 23rd this year.
Brining.
But we should be able to start on September 6th and wrap it up on June 23rd. Ultimately, you have to adopt the calendar, so if you have any input. My plan is to finish my draft based on the recent input I got from our administrators this morning and send this out to our three bargaining unit presidents within the next day or two as a courtesy. And then the following day, I'm going to send it out to the entire staff and say this is what it looks like. And I've already told them that that's what I'm going to be doing. So they know. I just don't like, don't like to surprise anybody, so that's why I just put it right on the table. So that's, that's my plan. And then it's my intent to bring you a calendar on March 15th to approve. You know, I'm starting to get calls from a handful, really, a small number of people who want to know when the first day of school is because obviously they're trying to work vacation days around those kinds of decisions. And this is about the time we adopt the calendar for the following year. Anyway, we're pretty much on schedule with that, so.
Am I reading this wrong or are the snow day makeup days the same days as the spring recess days?
That's, they typically have that, yes.
So if we use all our snow days, then we have no spring recess.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
And that is, I would say that that is also, that's also based on state education department. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it's regulation or practice, but essentially if you use all of your snow, just hypothetically, if you used all your snow days before spring break, and that's when you'd have to make them up.
Right.
If you use them up after spring break, there are no more days to use them up.
Right.
So if you had, if you had late snow days, for example, you'd get a, you'd get a dispensation because there are no other vacation days to make them up.
Right.
Use them up before that spring break, then you've got to use spring break.
Okay. So related question for this school year. So right now, my understanding is we've used one snow day.
Correct.
And if, I have no wood to knock on, but if, if we wind up with that being the total snow days that we use for this school year, then what does that do for our spring break this year?
Well, I put a plan in your, in your, in your packet, which we'll get to later under, yeah. There's a plan for that in your packet.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
So yeah, 6.6, we can probably talk about it later.
Oh, okay, sure. Sure. Okay.
All right, other old business? All right, seeing none. We have a couple of members level the public left here. If any would like to make a comment, now is your chance.
It's our time.
Okay, move on to other business. Other. Okay, so then we'll move on to our action items.
Did we make a decision about the legislative day in August?
Considering it was yesterday.
It already happened, Diane.
De facto, decision has been made.
Decision inertia.
All right.
Decision made?
We were supposed to make that decision last Tuesday.
Right. Well, yeah, it's snow day.
Is there anyone would like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, may have motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to designate Mark Fleischauer as the Board of Education representative to the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee, pending appointment to the committee by the Rhinebeck Town Board.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the permanent civil service appointments of Lisa Menz to the position of typist effective January 29, 2016, Patricia Yule to the position of teacher aide effective March 7, 2016, and Amber Wiler Lane to the position of food service helper effective March 8, 2016.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to reschedule the March 8, 2016 regular Board of Education meeting to Tuesday, March 15, 2016.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the plan for proposed changes to the 2015-16 school calendar through the remaining, through the scheduling of remaining unused emergency closing days, if any.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Deirdre, discussion?
Let me, let me just give me one second. So we would basically be adding a number of three-day weekends. We'd be making up a number of three-day weekends.
So what I'm proposing is adding one of the unused days to the front of spring break, that Friday, March 18.
Okay.
And the second of the four days at the end of spring break, Monday, March 28.
Okay.
Adding it, taking one of those days on Friday, April 22nd, which is the day before Passover, and then moving the two half-days, which are superintendent's conference days on June 23rd and June 24th to April 29th. So the staff will be in that day, and they will not be in on the 23rd slash 24th, but students won't be in on the 29th.
Okay, thank you.
If we have to, if we have snow days between now and then, we'll take them back in the same order that we give.
Okay. No, that's good, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions about that? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2015-16 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a donation of $575 to the Chancellor of Livingston's Elementary That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jennifer Ramo to conduct athletic placement process testing for the 2015-16 spring sport season as necessary?
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jennifer Ramo to conduct athletic placement process testing for the 2015-16 spring sport season as necessary?
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.